Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Katz.
Present.
Commissioner Lehrer.
Present.
Commissioner McGraw.
Present.
Vice President Neiman Brady.
Present.
For board members, Aquorum is present. Madam Vice President.
Good morning, everyone. Since I began serving on this board, I am frequently at awe by the work of our electric and water crews and their dedication to serving our customers. Our crews' response to restore power to thousands of customers during the last week's historic rainstorm was one of those occasions. I want to express my deep gratitude and appreciation to our power employees who worked up to 16-hour shifts in extreme weather and restored power for over 100,000 customers over five days of intense rainfall. Our water system operations staff also worked around the clock to keep the water flowing, addressing numerous issues that inevitably arise during storms of such magnitude. I also want to commend the department for activating our department operations center at the beginning of the storm and coordinating closely with the city emergency operations center throughout. This event demonstrated the effectiveness of having a DOC and using it regularly and makes us even more prepared for emergencies and climate impacts in the future. A big thank you to the employees who staffed it from divisions across the department to support our restoration work. This was a powerful atmospheric river and outages were inevitable. And unfortunately, a relatively small number of customers were without power for more than 24 hours. If your power went out, we thank you. We thank you for your patience and understanding and for supporting our crews, excuse me, supporting our crews while they made often complex repairs in very difficult conditions. There are countless stories of LEDWP employees going the extra mile to help communities and individuals above and beyond their core responsibilities, such as having a historic piano saved from a mudslide, as covered by NBC and others. This reaffirms for me how important we are to the communities that we serve. Having said that, many customers had long outages. And I know there are areas of our city where rain, wind, and heat storms hit especially hard, causing more frequent outages than are typical. Some of these locations involve underground vaults and equipment. Others occur in areas of our hillside neighborhoods and in areas where infrastructure is older, such as South LA, Mid-City, and Koreatown. There are northeast San Fernando Valley and east side neighborhoods that are also typically experiencing frequent and often extended outages during storms, among other areas. We have had the need to climate inform all of our key planning processes, to arrive at a climate resilient grid. And we have now enough information to learn from these storm experiences to harden our system. I would like staff to prepare a report identifying specific areas with these high-frequency and/or long-duration outages based on recent rain, wind, and heat storms. Perhaps the last five years is a good duration. This report should include the age of equipment and other factors, such as overloaded circuits or stations, water intrusion, access issues, regulatory obstacles, et cetera, contributing to outage frequency and duration. I would also like to see a timeline and a cost assessment and plan for improving reliability for these areas presented at one of the board meetings in the next month. I look forward to hearing more about our storm response in the general manager's report. Turning to other matters, I am pleased to share that Mayor Bass has nominated Wilma Pinder to the board, subject to confirmation by the city council. Ms. Pinder had a 30-year career in the office of the LA City Attorney, where she was a consummate civil trial lawyer. After her retirement, she was inducted into the Langston Bar and National Bar Association Hall of Fame. She has also had long tenures as an LA County Commissioner for the 2nd District and has a long history of serving as a community advocate and mentor to students at USC. On behalf of my fellow commissioners, we look forward to welcoming Commissioner Pinder to the board and request that staff support her with whatever information or requests she may need through her confirmation process and onboarding. Next, I would like to provide an update on the search for the new general manager. The mayor's office has informed me that their work to recruit and name a new general manager is progressing, and they are moving closer to concluding the process. However, they expect it may take a little bit longer than the three weeks left until Marty's announced retirement date. His expertise and experience are integral to our operations, so they have therefore asked me to request our general manager and chief engineer, Marty Adams, to remain with us just a bit longer and to also request that he remain available for a period of time, if needed, to ensure a smooth and orderly transition to the next general manager. Once again, I extend my heartfelt gratitude for Marty's years of service and his willingness to consider this request. His dedication to LEDWP continues to be tremendous, particularly to ensure a smooth transition for everyone involved. And the last topic I want to cover is Black History Month and Lunar New Year. Turning topics. LEDWP employees form a wonderful tapestry of backgrounds and cultures. Cultural traditions and celebrations are great opportunities to highlight the differences that make us so strong as a company and tie us to the many diverse communities that make up Los Angeles. This month, we are proud to honor and participate in two major cultural celebrations, Black History Month and Lunar New Year. Through Black History Month, we honor the achievements of the Black community nationwide and of African-American leaders here at LEDWP, working to provide reliable, high-quality, and equitable water and power services for our customers. It is immense pride that I join my fellow commissioners in celebrating our African-American workforce and their numerous achievements and their dedication to providing service to more than 4 million residences and businesses of Los Angeles. I saw a posting yesterday about a supplier diversity fair on February 22nd, and I am encouraged by that event being held. I look forward to hearing about the other plans that our Office of Diversity and Inclusion has developed for this month to recognize the achievements of African-Americans in our workforce and in celebration of Black History Month. This month, we are further honoring the department's diversity by participating in the annual Lunar New Year event, the 125th Annual Golden Dragon Parade in historic Chinatown on Saturday, February 17th. The Office of Diversity and Inclusion and Aspire are participating and inviting employees and their families to join in this year's parade, either by marching or as supporters along the way. The parade offers rich and diverse experience, attracting participants of all ages and ethnicities from greater Los Angeles. I'm sad to miss it this year, but I'll make sure that I tell my calendar for next year. The Lunar New Year is an important and revered holiday spanning thousands of years. It holds special significance for many communities. It's also a time for personal renewal and reaffirming family bonds. This year, 2024, is the Year of the Dragon, which signifies great strength and good fortune. In the spirit of this celebration, let us come together to embrace the positive energy associated with the Year of the Dragon. May it inspire us to overcome challenges, achieve new heights, and bring prosperity to our professional and personal endeavors. Thank you. All right. I'd like to see if any other commissioners have any comments or thoughts to contribute today.
I think I'm probably speaking for all of us in saying that we definitely want to second your remarks on all fronts, including thanking Marty for considering extending and the importance of upcoming diversity events, as well as really expressing our gratitude to our crews who are out there in the cold and rain and dark, ensuring that power was restored. So I think you said it all very eloquently, so I don't have anything to add except to second your remarks.
I only got some, really, I got a wonderful email from a relative who had major, major outage on Coldwater Canyon. And, or no, it's Laurel Canyon. And anyway, he just couldn't have more favorable comments for how the crews took care of them, their fear, because it was really an enormous tree that fell over onto their property from the house of a famous Hollywood celeb who wasn't taking care of his trees. That was the way it was said, commented. And everybody was safe, and he just was so impressed by the work that everybody did. And attention, nobody knew who was there, other than trees were falling and power was out. And it was wonderful to hear from that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will now open public comment at this time. Good morning, speakers. Please be mindful that you will have two minutes to address the board. The first speaker is Sam Williams, who will be followed by Johann Stein-Lechner.
I have complained about discrimination in 2018, 2019, and was called Hitler in January 2020 by Bernard Rogers. And LEDWP did not investigate this complaint. May 28, 2020, managers of steam generation were not wearing their mask, and I felt I was exposed to COVID-19. I sent an email to Marty Adams and told him that I was going to get tested for COVID-19, which I came back positive and received a worker's compensation number. July 2020, I filed a complaint to Andrew Kendall about the racism that was going on with the emails that all black, or by Ignacio Cabral, where he stated that all black people should be killed and sent back to Africa, and nothing was done. Here is the closure letter. There is also an overtime scheme. The supervisors of maintenance and steam generation run to pay themselves nearly $250,000 a year in bogus overtime without any fears because of Local 18 representing both labor and supervision. These are the egregious and fraudulent things going on in all four generating stations, and you guys want to ask for a rate hike. The supervisors use retaliation against labor and steam generation if you don't participate in the overtime scheme by not allowing you to promote. The supervisors and managers are funding their lavish lifestyles and living in other affluent communities while raping the citizens of Los Angeles for overtime to support their addictions and lifestyles. Managers are driving department cars home at rapier's expense while supervisors are making fraudulent overtime. Mr. Pickle, I have proof and videos. I am in possession of several videos I made at Scattergood Generating Station of managers having us illegally discharge millions upon millions of chemically untreated water into the Pacific Ocean, a direct federal violation of the Clean Waters Act. Lastly, the managers of LEDWP and IBW Local 18 have used the LEDWP or the LAPD Sheriff's Department and California Department of Justice to continually harass me at my home residence, which has led me to filing a civil grand jury investigation in the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. That's probably why you retired and probably why Cynthia McLean Hill got out of here. Here's all the racism. You guys can have it. I'll leave it here for you. Y'all better get this shit solved.
The next speaker is Johann Stein-Lechner.
Sir, if you just move those papers to the side, we'll take care of them.
Well, Martin, congratulations for the 40 years. Wish you a lot of luck and happiness the rest of your life. Yeah, I'm going to rekindle this. I was here in 2019. I worked at Los Alamos, I mean, Los Alamos National Laboratory anticipated my invention. I've been working on it for 20 years and six months and four days. That's when this report came out, and this was our final report. I'd like to rekindle the non-toxic engineers from the water power. Anyway, we can produce now 1.4 gigawatt per square mile. That's we can match mid-mid-term winds. It is, the difference is, on the mid-term winds, when they have to spread them out, we can increase any wind park by 14,000 percent. That's not me saying this. This is Los Alamos National Laboratory saying this. And I'd like to rekindle mid-engineers so we can at least put up 130 gigawatt if we want to. While Edison said in their white paper for to run all electrical in state of California, we need to add on another 130 gigawatts. I know you have 20 square miles available in the county. Like, we can produce like 28 gigawatts just here. It's order seven, seven. We have an offer right now for Marongo Tribe. They can produce approximately 10 gigawatts right now. It's a $4.6 billion deal, but they make like $12 billion a year. And for 14, you make around $24 billion a year. That's what adding to the city of Palm Springs, I mean, the city of Los Angeles would like to have this extra income. So I'd like to really work together how we can pencil that out. Okay.
Public comment is now closed at this time. Madam Vice President?
Thank you. Let me turn it over to Marty.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate the, well, I appreciate the offer to stay, the request to stay. I do, I am certainly willing to do what the department needs while the mayor finishes up their selection process. So I want to make sure this agency continues to run as is until new leadership is in place. So I will be taking up on the offer, and so thank you for extending that. And I know the process has been going on and should be completed soon, I hope. So I will be sticking around until that's finished.
Thank you, Marty.
I have just a few, I have a bunch of talking points, but I'm not going to make them because my voice has decided to leave me. So I just want to say real briefly on the storms. Certainly, our staff appreciates the board's recognition. And I'm going to let the systems talk about what they've done. Besides, obviously, probably the biggest emphasis is always on the power crews that are out there climbing poles and doing underground work in very hazardous situations. You know, it's interesting, we also have a very large number of people that work behind the scenes that are often not recognized. Call center had almost four times as many staff on over the weekend as normal leading into the storm. On Sunday, when we had outages start, we had no call wait time. And at the very worst, it was only a few minutes. And so, you know, a lot of times we forget there's people in the office that are working at home that are making sure that we're getting messages to and from our customers, our customer communications and corporate strategy group, constant messaging, making sure that our own executive team, yourselves, city leadership are all notified of the status, really stepping up their role to ensure that our field crews, that in the past we relied on conveying that information, that it was not falling on their shoulders. And that goes also for our people who worked in our operations center here at the department and as well the EOC, to take on that burden to help round out our emergency response. So the people who are the obvious first responders that are out there in the field were able to focus more on their jobs and have less responsibility, people calling them, people like me calling, asking for updates all the time. And so our response has greatly improved in the past, and a lot of it's due to folks, increased folks working behind the scenes, supporting those that are on the very front line, who are certainly doing the dangerous work that we see on the news and that sort of thing. So first, I'd like to turn it over to Aaron to talk about our response and how power system fared. And I would say that we were helped by a lot of wind, but I think all the infrastructure work that you've seen go on over the years, our pole work that we accelerated, our wildfire area, the hardening of the system, all those things, I think are paying off because we had a small number of outages for the size of the storm that it was. So Aaron, I'd like to turn it over to you and your team.
I think we've covered a lot of the ground. One good news is that the crews, both on the water and the power side, they were on the front line. We went through the storm. We're doing the cleanup work right now, but we came through it with zero injuries. So I think that's a big focus of ours, was the safety of our crews and the public. So I think that was a big accomplishment of the crews. And I just want to take a second and thank all those people that were in the middle of the night, climbing the poles, repairing things and stuff when the city was just going through the storm. So a couple of things. The after-action report is something that we're getting in place to learn from everything that we've done. As Marty mentioned, this was one of those events that the entire department pulled together. And, you know, from Romallo's team on the communication side, supply chain, you know, the fleet support, everybody did their job to make sure that the frontline employees are supported. And that's something that we're not going to rest and say we've done well. We have a lot of areas of improvements that we want to go through, but we still are going to look for opportunities for us to make sure that the operations are done very professionally. And later on the agenda, we have a presentation on the DOC processes that we're going to put in place. And that's the key nerve center for us to gather, analyze, and perform information, provide information to the frontline, so make sure our crews are responding to areas that will make the most impact on restoration. So that's something that we want to get good at. And then, as the request was done by our commissioner this morning, Nicole Brady, that the infrastructure also is something that we want to look at and make sure that the vulnerable infrastructure that we still have to repair and improve on, that's something that it's always going to be part of our after-action report to make sure that we are spending resources on it. Marty mentioned that we've done a lot of vegetation control and a lot of things before the storm, and that kind of paid off. And restoration of the poles and wires and crossarms that we've done. It is showing that it is making an impact, and we have more work to do. Simon is in DC, meeting with the DOE, but Nazir is taking his place. And he has some numbers that, if you could share some of the numbers so everybody knows what we've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Good morning, commissioners. Yes, everything that was said, definitely all of our efforts to, for inspection and maintenance, to identify all of the risk and mitigate and eliminate those risks, did pay off. Our inspection and maintenance program, vegetation management, was very successful in this storm. We did a comparison between this storm, which was also a record-breaking storm. We received nine inches of rain in four days in downtown Los Angeles. That is more than half what we get in a normal year for that area. Some of our service areas, we received more than 12 inches of rain. This coupled with the wind associated with this storm, it caused a lot of power interruptions. So as a comparison between this storm and the storm of last year in January of '23, this year, we had 110,600 customers experienced outages during the five days of the storm. As compared to last year's storm, we had 211,000 customers experienced outage during that storm. At the peak of the storm, this year, we had 16,700 customers out of power. In comparison to last year, we had over 84,000 customers out at the peak of that storm. Some of the major causes for the power outages were 144 broken poles. We had 75 cases of overhead conductors that came down, 133 underground circuit problems. We had 101 circuit problems caused by trees. Now, these are tree limbs or trees falling on the wires. We had 216 cases of other foreign objects on overhead conductors. This could be plastic debris, palm fronds, and other debris that end up causing issues. By 5 o'clock on Wednesday, our crews had restored 92,454 outages. They had restored 92,000 customers. And that is averaged restoration of 8.68 hours. Under these conditions, that is a very good time. So we're definitely improving. We see the improvement from the last storm to now. There's also still room for improvement, and we will have a more detailed report at a later date.
Thank you, Nazir, and thank you, Aaron. Next, I'd turn it over to Enzo to give us an update, probably less storm news locally, but a lot up north, and tell us what this did for our water supply, as well as actually locally capturing water. And then he'd also like to bring up what the water system has coming up called the tapoff.
Yes. Thank you, Marty. Good morning, commissioners. As far as water supply, Nazir mentioned that with this latest storm, we got almost nine inches of water here in downtown LA, which is quite significant, since the average is around 15 for the entire season. So we got it all in one storm. What that meant from a stormwater capture perspective is that we were able to capture almost 26,000 acre feet, which is pretty significant. That's over 8.4 billion gallons of water that we were able to capture. And now we're in the process of using that to recharge the San Fernando Basin. If you look at it from last October, which is when the water year begins, we've actually collected almost 44,000 acre feet of water. So that's all over half of what our capacity is. We've been able to do that since October of last year. So a pretty significant amount of water that we've been able to collect. So what does that mean from a water supply perspective? I think I mentioned earlier that the Department of Water Resources, back on December 1st, had announced the state water project allocation at 10%. That number has not changed at this point. We expect that there's a good chance it will change based on the latest storms, which, by the way, there's another atmospheric river expected to hit the Mammoth area by Saturday. We don't expect it to be as large as the last one, but it has the potential to drop approximately two feet of snow in Mammoth area. So that's pretty significant. So we're looking forward to getting that additional water for our water supply outlook. In the eastern Sierra, which is where the LA Aqueduct receives its water from, we are right now, from a water content perspective, we are around 83% of normal to date. And if we were to receive no additional snowpack for the rest of the season that goes through April, we will be around 56% of normal as of April 1st. So we're doing really well, but obviously, there's still a lot of room to go. And we're hoping that the storm coming in this weekend is going to provide some additional cushion there when it comes to our water supply perspective. The event I wanted to mention, and thank you, Marty, for announcing that, is that on February 29th, which is a Thursday, the Water Distribution Division will be hosting the 2024 Tapoff Competition and Emergency Preparedness Safety Fair. This is something that we've done for multiple years. Last year, it was extremely popular. It was well-attended. It'll take place at our Silmar West facility, which is in Silmar, California. So I wanted to invite all the commissioners, if you have the time, to attend. It's from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's a lot of fun because you get to see our best and brightest competing against other utilities in a variety of competition. But we also have the safety fair and health screening. So it gives an opportunity to not just see the competition, but also to hear from safety professionals, do some health screening, as well as we also have vendors that are advertising their products. So once again, that is the 2024 Tapoff Competition, and it'll be February 29th from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Silmar West in Silmar.
So that's during the week?
It's during the week, correct. It's Thursday. Yes. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Enzo. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Joe Romallo to talk about the new outage map that we may create use of, was very successful during the last storm, as well as announcing an effort that was a long time coming, that we launched quietly a couple of weeks ago to make sure all the bugs were worked out. And that's the new LEDWP website, which is working very well. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Two online tools that our customers use on a daily basis, but especially during weather like we recently experienced, are the department's outage maps located at ladwp.comoutages. Recently, the power outage map went through a full revamp, utilizing advanced interfaces and IT work that allowed us to display a lot more detailed data. Right now, on the outage map, we have different statuses that are available for customers to see if they have an outage. They can hover over it. It will tell them how many customers in their area, that an outage has been reported and that we are aware of it, that it's assigned and in queue for dispatch, that crews are en route, and that crews are working. Those are all different color-coded and size-coded, so that customers can get a lot more detailed information. In the past, they were just able to see that an outage occurred in their general area without a great deal more detail. We, this was an effort that was led and implemented both by communications, IT, and power system outage management team. outage management team. I want to specifically thank and recognize Ellen Chang, Yusun Chung, Wei Chao from IT, Nick Alexander and Kodeh Azuma from Power System. There's a lot more functionality here. It was very well received during the recent storm. It was also something that we had reviewed with the Energy and Environment Committee and had taken their feedback as well and incorporated additional updates just prior to this storm. We will continue to review it and solicit feedback about how it can be improved. One of the areas that we noticed is that because the dot is only so big and it's actually located where our equipment has a problem, someone may not recognize that that actually is their neighborhood when they type in their address. There are some technological limitations, but we're going to continue to see how we can improve it moving forward. In addition to the power outage maps being updated, I hope that you've noticed and seen that our ladwp.com platform has been fully replaced. This is a modern platform that's responsive, which means you can view it on your phone, a tablet, or on the computer, and all the information is easily read. There's also a much more improved search function on the website, which makes finding information a lot easier. We're going to continue to work on it. We went live with it. We debugged a number of things, including some links that were broken, but overall, the rollout has been very smooth. It replaced a platform that was 12 years old. As you can imagine, in the world of IT and websites, that was ancient. Our staff did a great job. It actually was the product of a sandbox exercise that was undertaken while we were trying to contract for a much more expensive web developer. And that sandbox effort by our team that worked on this won out. I do want to mention Dom James, Renee Vasquez, Terry Schneider, Vanessa Lopez, Tom Godino, Stephanie Tong, Marcus Mitchell, Justin Saris, Vincent from our comms team as well, as well as George Ordia, who put a year's worth of work into the new platform. If you see things that you would like to see improved, please let us know, but we're very pleased with it so far. It's really the first phase of another effort that will be undertaken to improve the customer interface, the authenticated side where customers pay their bills. That will be the next project that we'll be undertaking in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next, I'd like to turn it over to Greg Reed to talk about our two cultural events this month, Black History Month, as well as Lunar New Year. And as you'll see from the things that Greg's going to talk about, you know, we made a very conscious effort to spend a lot of time including and recognizing and really appreciating the many cultures that make up not only the city, but really our employee base, which very well reflects the city that we serve. So Greg, why don't you go ahead and let us know what's coming up this month? Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you so much, Marty, and thank you, board commissioners, for an opportunity to share with you. And of course, our board, Madam Vice President, has shared several of the events that are coming up. But I want to just start by saying happy Black History Month to our board, to our employees, and to our communities. Of course, Black History Month was founded by Carter G. Woodson in 1926 as Negro History Week. And Carter G. Woodson is also the founder of an important organization, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. Negro History Week has grown to become Black History Month, and that organization that Carter G. Woodson founded also establishes the theme of every Black History Month. And so for this year's theme, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History designated the theme for this year as African-Americans and the Arts. So the organization has indicated that African-American artists have used art to preserve history and community memory as well as for empowerment. And so with that, the intention is to examine the varied history and life of African-American arts and artisans, and the aim is to celebrate and honor the richness of the past and the president, and the present, as we continue to look forward to what the future may bring. With that being said, we've participated in an important event this past Saturday as a department, and it was our first time participating in the Black College Expo. And so this is a forum that exposes our children in the Los Angeles area to opportunities to pursue college career, college studies at our historically black colleges and universities across the nation. Our city departments participate, LA Fire, LAPD, and it was DWP's first time participating alongside IBEW to showcase our employment opportunities, our internship and apprenticeship opportunities, featuring our utility pre-craft training program. And so it was a really great way to engage the community, in particular in this month of Black History Month. With that being said, we have some upcoming activities, and I'm really proud to announce our LADWP National Society of Black Engineers chapter here is putting on Youth Day at DWP. So that event will be held on Saturday, February 24th, and the theme is Engineers to Astronauts. And this event will be here at JFB from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and it will feature a showing of The Space Race. And this is a documentary that highlights the first African-American astronaut. In addition to that screening, we will also have tables for the kids who are present to interact with our engineers, to know what our programs are and what it's like to be an engineer on a day-to-day basis, and to inspire the next generation of engineering professionals. So I really, you know, applaud LADWP and NSB Chapter under the leadership of Katina Thomas and Vern Brazil, President and Vice President of our Professional Chapter.
What's the date again?
That is on Saturday, February 24th. So I'll be sure to get the calendar invites on your calendar, and if you're able to join us, that would be wonderful. I believe we're anticipating somewhere over 150 kids to be present for that event. In addition, we will expect to have a presentation from our very own NSB Chapter here in the boardroom on our next board meeting on the 27th. So looking forward to hear their report and the success that they've enjoyed. We also have a supplier diversity event that is featuring, I'm sorry, that we are hosting here in the building on February 22nd, that's Thursday at 5:00 PM. And this also is being done in recognition of Black History Month in that we are focusing on black business participation, but all business participation and minority inclusion. And so this will be a matchmaking event that features several agencies. We're the host agency, but we also have Bureau of Engineering, Public Works Contract Administration, Metro, Lawa, Metropolitan Water Districts of California, and several large prime contractors to matchmake and present contracting opportunities to our vendor community. So this will be a second event that we've had. A first one was in November of last year, was a huge success. And this particular event will be hosted in our museum area, and it's going to be a really lovely matchmaking event. And as far as Lunar New Year, we, of course, are participating in the 125th Golden Dragon Parade, but we are also participating with Aspire to host a Lunar New Year celebration here in the JFB cafeteria tomorrow at lunchtime. And so it'll be a really great opportunity for us to gather, to recognize the cultural tradition that is so rich with our Lunar New Year celebration, and to hear from various speakers about how that tradition is celebrated in their various families. So I hope that we can enjoy a strong participation by our employees, and hopefully we can see our board members there as well. So with that, I will close my remarks with that and look forward to seeing a strong participation in the 125th Golden Dragon Parade on Saturday, the 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. One last thing. I like this report because I don't have to talk much. This is good. Lastly, I just wanted to recommend, well, it's probably hard to listen to. We had our Science Bowl scrimmage. This is the event that we've been holding at DWP for, I don't know how many decades now, on Saturday, the 27th of January. Coming up on March 2nd, we will have the Regional Science Bowl hosted here, and this is a longtime tradition. We rely on a number of staff to volunteer as judges and participate in this with local schools. It really promotes science and technology and engineering mathematics. You may recall in news in the past where teams that have won here at our Science Bowl have gone on to win national science bowl. And so that's coming up on Saturday, March 2nd, the major science bowl competition. Staff from Joe's team organizes every year, and they have engineering recruits from throughout the department that participate in this. So it's a very worthwhile event. If you're a staff member and are interested in participating, please get ahold of, well, I'll turn it to Joe and he'll, Walter Zeisel usually leads the effort for us, but it's very rewarding, and it's something that we look forward to, and the fact that we've been able to use this along with LA schools to really showcase real star performers that had a lot of national recognition in the past. So that's coming up. We're looking forward to it. And that is the conclusion of my report. Is there any questions?
I have a question, sort of a question and sort of a request. I had an excellent meeting yesterday with Commissioner Katz and with Senior AGM and Salma Collins and some of the division heads for the water system, trying to start to get our hands around our performance as a department against the city's Green New Deal goal of 70% local water by 2035. And so I just wanted to sort of formally request a board presentation on that progress, a status update, let us know, you know, how we're progressing against that goal, where we need to improve. Yeah, generally that sort of update as soon as possible. I realize it might take us some time to get that information together, so I'll let you all come back to us with when that can be possible, and we'll get that scheduled through the board office, but just as soon as you can.
We'd be happy to. And you know what might be, I appreciate that, and after we give that, maybe we could create some kind of regular scorecard or report card to the board on both the water and power goals and how we're progressing so that you'll always be able to track our progress as we go.
Good. You're anticipating my other requests, so I can comment that meeting. A dashboard would be great. I think we'll want to keep our eyes on those goals as we get closer and closer to them.
Happy to do that.
And I'll echo the rest of the people in the day by saying I'm really happy you're holding down the fort while we get this next GM position settled too. So thanks, Marty.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, turning over to Dr. Pickle, comments on agendas items and others.
First, it's something in the water. I, too, am delaying my departure. Got your attention on Salma.
Oh, yeah.
So I've been asked through the selection committee process for my replacement to stay around to about mid-year.
Thank you.
Unless things proceed faster than they expect, in which case I am required to depart when they're done. The, on two agenda items, one, the agenda item on expanding our participation with the California Independent System Operator, we think this is a good move forward. While the benefit exceeds cost, it won't have as big a positive impact as participating in the EIM probably, but the information that all parties will get by participating in a formal market of this type will likely enhance everybody's understanding of both short-run and long-run impacts and needs. And second, I think we need to understand more about DWP's fiber strategy, certainly as a part of or separate from the current item in two.
Thank you. Are there any other comments about your general other work?
We anticipate releasing two reports in the near future, one on incentive compensation for executive level, but hopefully that can be extended to other levels. And two, although adoption of this is likely to take a while. The other component is we have spent a long time looking at rate impacts from how fast and how we move to higher levels or lower levels of GHG gases in our clean energy mix.
I look forward to seeing that and perhaps having you come and present on that topic to the broader group on your work. Okay, moving along to items for approval, we'll call special one and two. Is there any interest in calling any others special?
Not today, thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve items three, four, and five?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
Commissioner McCraw?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion adopted.
All right, very good. We'll now move to the presentation on Office of Emergency Management.
So my name is Dan Ashelman, Chief Safety Officer and also the manager of the Office of Emergency Management. We're here this morning just as a follow-up to the commissioner's request for an update on some of the three projects that we presented back in September. So just before I jump into that, there was two specific questions that were asked, one around budget. So at this point, we're moving on these projects now. We're not waiting, but we have developed a budget that will be in place at the start of this fiscal year. Second item is around our staffing plan, including requesting some additional positions for Office of Emergency Management and reorganization. Again, also will be in place at the start of this fiscal year. So this first slide is just kind of the first project we outlined was really around our emergency manual. A little bit of a change from what we talked about last year is that we are now combining our department emergency manual with our continuity of operations manual. It will be renamed the DCOO, but really the advantage for this combining is that all this critical information, first around kind of emergency response in the immediate and then kind of into the recovery and phase that follows in the days after, will be in one location. As you can see on this slide here, it's really organized in a tiered fashion where as we move through this hierarchy, each tier gets more granular and specific, going through the systems, the divisions, and down into the facilities. So here we have the levels of activation that are in place now and align better with the city's same levels. And I'll just talk through briefly how this worked in our last storm, where level five is our lowest level of activation. That's our kind of steady state. Level four, we did that just out in front of this storm as we became aware that it was going to impact our service area. We start with a triggered response to all department employees through a bulletin just to tell them this is what we're doing, how we're preparing, and what's expected of them. It also triggers specific communication as far as a coordination call with internal resources and divisions where we can collaborate with all of our internal stakeholders and on our preparedness efforts. Just in the hours before the storm, we went to level three, which then triggers a department operations center, the DOC activation, with 24-hour staffing, and we continued at that state throughout the duration of this storm.
What enabled you to trigger it before the storm?
Was it? To trigger which?
The level three.
The level three. We triggered just out in front of that because we knew at that point it was imminent. It was just a few hours out in front, and it allowed us to get, you know, the critical staff there before we knew that weather impact was going to be on the road. So that was a decision that we made. And we stayed at that state, level three, throughout and into kind of the recovery phase, and then we deactivated after that on the back end of the storm.
One, can I just add one thing, just follow up on your question? So the city activates the city emergency management. So we always synchronize our levels with city. We can go ahead of them just to get mobilization and other things, but we will always be in sync with the cities.
Thank you, Aaron. Yeah. One thing I do want to highlight, it's already been mentioned right now, as I'm happy to report on, as Chief Safety Officer, we did come through this event, which was very significant, with zero storm restoration-related injuries. And I think that really is a testament to management's organization, leadership's organization, but more so just to our employees being prepared and able to kind of actively mitigate the hazards that they were facing out there, and there were many during this storm. This slide really just shows the different plans I've already just highlighted and discussed, but shows the hierarchy structure that exists when the DOC is activated. And along the bottom, you see the many divisions that have already been identified at this point that will require their own plan. This number most likely will increase slightly as this model matures. This is a conceptual DOC redesign slide. We are currently working with our department architects and have visited other city department or operation centers as well as other utilities. architects and have visited other city department or operation centers as well as other utilities. Operation centers, just as a lessons learned opportunity, see what works well and what doesn't as a part of our redesign. We are targeting a four-year build-out plan for our redesign of our operation center. And at this point, we expect to be able to use internal resources, both for the construction and for the technology build-out of our department operations center.
Why four years? It seems like a long time.
That's just as working with the architects. We so this is for the completion of it. That's just the timeline that we're come up with the redesign. It's going to be in the planning phases. Right now, we are putting a scoping package together of what we anticipate this looks like. And then using internal department resources as far as construction crews, there is a queue priority that we have to fit into.
Given the
Go ahead.
Given the importance of this, is there any reconciling the queue? I mean, if someone told me it would take four years to build a house, I wouldn't build the house. So it just seems like a long period of time. Is there any way to accelerate that?
We can definitely explore that. Part of, I mean, something to understand is right now, this are currently what we have is functional. It works well. And that's going to be in place until we actually break ground, so to speak, on this on this.
So there's no urgency, is what you're saying?
Yes. So it will kind of have a seamless transition. And then we also own trailers, mobile command centers that can be used that we don't frequently exercise, but we will have an opportunity to kind of just use this to exercise those trailers and understand how well they work as well.
And do you have an alternate doc if something were to happen in the building where the DOC is is located? Is there a clear alternate location and plans for how to switch?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we're looking at is is a build-out of the Eagle Rock facility that will be just a flexible space that can be used for normal operations, but very quickly propped up during an emergency activation.
Great, thank you.
The key is going to be standardized operation centers, centers across the entire city. Depending on what the where the emergency is, we will open up a disaster center close to that operation. It'll look the same. It'll have the same technology. And then we also have the mobile units that we can move into specific locations where we don't need to be very close to it. So we are going to have this this overall strategy to make that happen.
And then regardless of command center, you know, given that we do have distributed operations like this, I think I brought this up in the last board meeting related to emergency management, but do you have virtual EOC-type software or technology that's connecting everyone yet? And if not, are you exploring what that could look like to make sure that these different command centers have one place they can go, a dashboard, not just emails between groups, but actually some sort of integrated online system?
So we have, I mean, our normal resources as far as kind of a WebEx virtual type meeting things, but we're working with IT, met with them actually yesterday to that end is where we're actually going to have some technology where we we hope to have it in place, maybe even as early as this next activation, as far as kind of being able to live stream and have virtual meetings where we have, you know.
But I'm not talking about meetings. I'm talking about like shared resources. So for example, having one dashboard everyone can look at to see the critical areas where there are problems during an emergency, or those types of, you know, a sit stat sharing technology. And that could be external, it could be in-house, but it didn't sound like we had dashboards like that or a shared.
I think some of what you're getting at will be in the next slide, and then give me feedback if you think it needs, you know, more structure or build out.
Thank you.
So this next slide really speaks to the GIS system. It's a platform that we're working with ITS on. And just I'll work quickly through the timeline here. Back in October, we identified a coordinator to kind of be strategic, take the lead on that. Into November, we kind of looked through some of the data points that we want plotted on that platform. And in January, we held a tabletop exercise with multiple divisions in the department to kind of stress it a little bit and see where some of the weaknesses are and get feedback from the other groups. And then we're kind of in the developing the SOP platform right now. And it's in while it is in its infancy, we do think that we can use this again as early as, you know, next week, should a DOC activation be triggered. And inside this, this was the slide that was presented. Unfortunately, I don't have it in this deck, but what was presented last time was essentially a map or a grid overlay of the city of Los Angeles with specific assignments to each grid over each grid. And then we would be able to target our resources within each grid and what we need to do and how we need to respond to those. So our first kind of tiered build out of that is really going to be around department facilities. We want to get a clear understanding in one source of location, everything that we own as the department, and be able to get situational awareness of that. And then that tiered build-out platform, when we start to incorporate information from other public agencies and city groups, and then into the private sector, would be the third and final phase.
Thank you. Yeah, this does get at a little bit more what I was talking about, where there's one place that, you know, executive leadership or whoever is the liaison to the city EOC can see the status of efforts and give a clear report and not have to collect it all by email or in a meeting. So this is a good start. Thank you.
And this is, and it says Navigate LA. It's actually Navigate LADWP, so it's an internal platform that we have control of.
Great.
And that is in good partnership with IT. So thank you to them for their support in that. And this is our third and kind of final project to give an update on. You see there's many public-facing communication tools here. I just want to highlight and focus the InformaCast model. This is something that we, as we had discussions last time, we needed a better platform for communication with our internal department personnel. So this model was settled on, and it has the capability to send texts, voicemail, a phone call, and an email all simultaneously or any combination thereof. And we were able to use this in our last activation. Out in front of this storm, we sent targeted communications during the storm, again, targeted, and then on the back end. It was also used in our most recent earthquake that we had last Friday, just to kind of send a situational awareness to to leadership around that event. So this is scalable. We believe this, or actually we know this, this has the capability to be used by every single employee within the department. But we're just kind of moving systematically and prioritizing how we scale it up. And that concludes my update to the board.
Will you put the commissioners on the list to get an update?
I'll make a note. Yep.
One thing that I've been wondering is about water and power emergency response. And from my understanding, in the past, they've actually been fairly separate. Is that still the case? Is that the case? And is that how it will continue? Or do they, or in the new model, are they coming together collectively?
So what we highlighted last time is that each individual division and system has the capability to stand on its own and handle its own issues. But when the situation arises to the point where it's impacting multiple divisions or crosses kind of across the line, it's at the enterprise level impact, we do have unified command that goes through the Department Operations Center. At that point, we do integrate, and we did integrate during this last activation.
Okay. And the mobile units that we have, though, are designated power and water, depending on, right, because they're just configured that way. Is that correct?
The one, the one that that my group has ownership of is is joint system, and it's for both.
It's for both.
It's for anyone in the department that has need.
Okay. And so is there then a separate water and a separate power one as well?
Some of the divisions do have their own mobile command centers, and they're configured slightly differently, but we do have the ability to coordinate and communicate with them.
And I have a question on the Navigate LA, the GIS, Infocast model. Is that based on dependent on S3 technology? Or do you use somebody else?
That's a technical question that I don't know. It may be.
I was going to say, you know, some power trouble runs its crews for any kind of outage. And and if you recall, that was the two storms ago, we realized that we were just overwhelming them with responsibility for communicating. And that's when Arm had set up the, you know, the really department-wide operations center. Water, same thing, will run its work out of either command, the control center for operations or out of its water trouble board. So they'll run their crews out of there. The difference now is that all those issues roll up together so that we can coordinate for support if there's outages that involve both groups. And that also becomes a central hub for communicating with the rest of the city where, as opposed to each water and power doing that separately. So it is, it is taking advantage of the existing structure where the work's happening, but adding that middle layer that we were missing before that coordinates our department-wide efforts as well as our communications. On the Info, the former cast model, Joe, that's what the airport has been using, right? So so there's a really good track record in the city with the use of this. And it replaces some things that we were doing with our communications, which had gotten kind of hit and miss and become less formalized over time. But Joe, you want to talk about just that model?
One of the things we're working on with OEM is how to layer those messages, right? There's certain messages that are necessary for managers, for operators, for the board, for other stakeholders. So we will be working with them to develop those communications plans around it. LAPD actually uses a slightly different platform than this one, but we have looked at this together with OEM, very impressed with its capabilities and have a lot of high hope for how it can really streamline and improve our communications via text, voice message, as well as via email.
And within the structure of the EOC, do we have a public information unit? Joe, are you part of?
Yes, my team staffs both the DOC as well as the city's EOC, and we coordinate from those two locations. And I can tell you, having been on the communications end of emergency or storm responses, the operations at the DOC are a huge ground swell of just change. It's a it's a tremendous shift in our ability to better communicate and to get real-time operational information, as well as information to our customers. We had instances last week where single apartment buildings were out with 100 units, and we had folks on the ground there visiting the apartment manager to get them the restoration information that they needed. That's only possible when you have that co-location and response that's coordinated.
Thank you.
And we have other other desks also. So we have the Public Information Officer, we have the planning, we have logistics, we have IT, we have intelligence and analytics. All these functions will be activated when the DOC is activated.
Great. And that includes logistics, supply chain.
Everything, yeah, everything that I mentioned.
And how much, so I know one of the challenges, having some emergency management background, I know one of the challenges is having people trained on everything. How much depth do we have to our bench, you know, in a major earthquake or major emergency, some people might not be able to get to the DOC? Do we have backups for most of the main, you know, positions like the operations chief or the different roles within the EOC?
Yeah, so we're working through training right now. I think that that's kind of a smattering of the levels of training. We've developed a baseline after following kind of the Hillary thing, and we're getting managers that would, we would expect to be part of a DOC activation through that training. Many of the managers are already trained at that level. But we do have a depth of bench. And out in front, what we're doing now, just to kind of help organization, is we send out a roster and we ask people to fill in their availability, and we fill in multiple shifts, especially if we know this storm is going to go into multiple days. So we have those people can pre-plan their live schedules. And right now, we do eight-hour shifts with the ability to kind of hold over. There is the capacity at that. Actually, we have sleeping quarters, we have meals, we have all the resources should people get trapped in that facility for a longer or held over for a longer amount of time. We have the, I don't want to say trapped, should they be held for a longer amount of time, just as part of the restoration efforts, we have the capacity to manage through that as well.
And remember, these are on shifts. So so already, there's a number of people who cover even on a regular storm. So it's not, it's not one person at each responsibility. It's a, how many people ran all those third shifts, Dan?
It really depends on, and so this is again, right, with the ICS model, it's scalable. For this one, we probably had at any, you know, any one given time, 10 to 15 people in that operations center.
Yeah.
But it's based on needs. We have IT support, we have the technical, just to work through any issues that we come. So
Great.
And I think we're going to get better at the training, I mean, the shift. This time, we had a roster of backup names. And and part of the training is to rotate the seats across the systems. So you have water system managers doing different functions as much as the power system managers occupying those seats, and also getting the after-action reports to make sure that we we constantly give feedback on the training and the effectiveness of each of the seats that we have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Dan, when do you come back again? Or haven't you come back again?
Nothing scheduled.
Nothing scheduled. Okay. Will you just circulate an update on the the schedule for the new DOC center?
On the construction portion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we are going to resume reporting on committee activity to the broader commissioners and the broader community. There are numerous committees that meet outside of the the main road functioning. And I think it's good practice just to communicate that meetings and committees have met and just what their general business was during that time. So there were three committee meetings that transpired since the last board meeting. These two I will cover as a chair of those two. We had an Inyo Standing Committee meeting last week, which the materials are posted online, but that meeting was a typical runoff update. And all the slides are available for view. Nothing of unusual in that meeting. And we had it here in LA with the Inyo County delegation, as well as Commissioner McGraw was in attendance and Councilmember Yarovlovsky. We also held a special audit committee meeting to request that the audit team add to their typical audit load. They, the audit committee keeps a portion of their budget avail and their time allocation available to ad hoc requests and special audits. And so they are adding the audit of travel expenses, trust fund utilization, and sponsorships for the past, I believe, 18 months to their their workload. And we'll report back on timing and an update at the next audit committee meeting. Commissioner Katz, you want to give an update on the investment committee?
Yeah, we had the investment committee on January 23. We met in accordance with the department's investment policy. This committee includes the department general manager, chief financial officer, and one of the directors in the city controller's office, in addition to myself as the commission representative. The committee approved keeping the investment policy as currently stated, which is in compliance with the California Government Code on Investments. We received a market environmental update from financial services staff as of January 23, reviewed the investment plan versus actual investments made as of September 30, 2023, and reviewed the list of investment brokers or dealers that LADWP does business with. And we noticed that 29.8% of investment dollars were placed with minority-owned or women-owned or disabled veteran or small business vendors. This percentage was consistent with the prior year as well. So some of the recommendations or considerations that the committee raised for staff included considering incorporating ESG or environmental, social, and governance risk factors into the department's investment policy. We encouraged staff to achieve a higher level of investments made with brokers or dealers who have MBE, WBE, SB, or DVBE status, since it's been kind of steady for a couple of years. And then we also suggested that the current investment policies and procedures be reviewed by a qualified outside auditor to see if there are improvements or changes that the committee should consider.
And that is an annual committee, correct?
Correct.
Good. Thank you. And for what it's worth, Inyo and audit are roughly quarterly in their meeting, unless there's a special meeting called. Okay, next, filed items. Does anyone have any questions or comments on filed items? No? All right, I would actually like to pull filed item number two to be just for discussion here or added. In particular, slide seven, start with slide seven.
While you're getting this slide up, actually, we had, I had one other report on committees.
Okay.
We we established the Committee on Extreme Heat Response and Reform, and Commissioner Lehrer is serving with me on that committee. And so we met to discuss the formal scope of the committee and also develop some plans to meet with external partners. In particular, we focused on the importance of coordination with the Climate Emergency Mobilization Office.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to pull this, I'm asking this presentation to be, the filed item to be presented particularly page seven and page 13, and I'll turn it to A. Ann in one moment, because I think it's important to raise to the surface and to acknowledge the high level of collections that we have, our customer accounts receivables in both power and water, and what we're doing actively to try to rein those in a little bit. And while I know both Ann and Joe's team are working together to develop a more robust plan, and also I appreciate the work that's commenced around large business customers, I think it's important for this just to be talked about a little bit. And so I'll turn it to Ann for a second.
Thank you, commissioners. So as depicted on our financial monthly activity report, as of November, the power system had $1,111 million in accounts receivable outstanding. As a percentage of retail revenue, that's 24.2%. We started doing this report prior to COVID, when we were having some CCB billing challenges, just to make sure our billings were getting back on track. And during COVID, we did have a moratorium on collections. So that moratorium has ended, and now what we're doing is working together to educate customers about our payment plans, payment arrangements, our net monthly billing. So, but we need to get back on track, because when you look at the graph, you can see that the spring is actually when sales are low and customers have the ability to catch up on receivables. So we're hoping to utilize some of that time period without overwhelming customer service, so that by, before the next hot summer, receivables come down to a more reasonable level.
Okay. Can you go to the next slide, please?
Can I ask a quick question about that last slide first?
Good. This is just power, just to be clear.
Right. The relative doubling in power collections between, you know, 2013 and now, is that all attributable to COVID? Or did we see an increase pre-COVID?
So there is an increase pre-COVID. The 2013, that was a benchmark before we moved to CCB.
Okay.
Our new billing system. One of the changes we made in our accounting policy is if you left the service area, but you still had a receivable balance, we keep it in the system so that if you return the service area, customer service can see that you still have a balance, and they can work on a payment plan. So prior to that, they were taken off and kept on the side, but now all of that data is in the system for customer service to readily see. So there is some level of increase, just because we have four years to collect on a receivable where the customer hasn't paid us. So that is one portion of it, but then the other portion is active customers who just need to take our bill seriously.
Okay, thank you.
And turning to 13.
And on slide 13, this is water systems accounts receivable as of November, $257 million, which is 16.2% of retail revenue. This will come down. The department has applied for a relief program that was available through the state, so we're getting approximately $78 million. And we expect it to come in March, and we'll apply that to all of the qualified receivables that grew during the COVID period.
But we're just very fortunate that that is something that has been made, that we saw it, and we've been granted in order to help. And it looks like we, if I'm not mistaken, the red dip on this slide is as a result of a different grant that we had received at an earlier point.
We did. We, that's, we did receive one earlier. We also received one on power earlier as well. And the department has made significant, you know, access to grants and things where we could help customers, but I think that this is the last one we expect.
Yeah, exactly. So with this being the last one, we, it's now the time to start focusing on our collections.
I just want to add, for anybody watching at home, we have very generous payment plans that you can enroll in online. We are communicating that very actively. We are going to continue to. There's a lot more that we'll discuss and present to you. But just, now is the time to get caught up. People have ignored our bills for years now, in some instances, in the most egregious cases. We have also begun our collections process for our commercial customers, working closely with Ann and some very high residential customers. But this is a very serious issue. We're taking it very seriously, working through it collaboratively with Ann. And if you are behind on your bill in any amount, we allow you to enroll that past due amount in a payment plan that's very generous at zero interest. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right. Next, any introductions for motions for future consideration? Okay. Discussion with neighborhood councils. I have skipped over the minutes because I'd like to defer them to the next meeting. Apologies for skipping ahead already. And then, any neighborhood council commentary? Nope?
No community impact statements were filed.
Okay. So now, time to discuss item number one and number two. So, item number one is a motion that I'm going to read because I did not get myself, I didn't have enough time to submit it before the deadline. This is in response to a Yaroslavsky and McCosker motion from the city council members about 10 days ago, where they put forth a motion to direct LADWP and the commissioners to perform some analysis and get some studies done. And so a lot of this language, of this motion takes into that, into consideration. A lot of it mirrors what they wrote in their, their motion, but provides more nuance based on what we, you know, it's more detail that we know about our own operations, as well as the fact that one item that they requested is already underway by Marty. Marty is already in the process of seeking a consultant to support board effectiveness strategy. So that part is not included. That was in the motion that the council members had presented. So bear with me a second while I read this, and it, as follows. Whereas, in response to a changed and still changing climate that threatens the public health and safety of all Angelenos, the City of Los Angeles has adopted a number of very aggressive goals to both reduce the city's emission of climate-warming greenhouse gases and to make our communities more resilient. Among these are goals for the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power to provide 100,000, 100,000, 100% clean energy and to source 70% of its water from local sources by 2035. Whereas, these goals continue to be strongly supported by the city council and mayor and represent a radical transformation in how LADWP will serve the City of Los Angeles in the future. Whereas, to achieve these and other important goals, while ensuring that historic inequities are rectified and ratepayer funding is spent wisely, LADWP will need to be much more aggressive, innovative, efficient, and nimble than it has in the past. Whereas, in order to transform LADWP to be prepared for the future, its new leadership needs to have a deep understanding of the current state of Department of Water and Power and its path for achieving its future goals. Whereas, public and private organizations that are undergoing these types of challenges and that face significant obstacles to change have frequently sought an independent evaluation of their operations to guide decision-making and ensure a strategic focus. Whereas, having such an assessment will help support the commission and new general manager as they guide LADWP into becoming a modern, effective, equitable, and responsive electric and water utility. I therefore move that the general manager initiate a competitive bidding process to solicit proposals from expert strategic consultants with experience advising water and power utilities of LADWP's scale and scope. This process should be expedited and target a recommendation date of three months from now. The proposals should include three progressively elective stages to include, one, an evaluation and roadmap stage, two, a milestone-based execution plan development, and three, implementation support. The efforts will conduct a comprehensive organizational performance and program evaluation to, one, assess the current systems, processes, organization, and operations of the power system, water system, and joint system, which may include addressing effectiveness in areas ranging from workforce and hiring practices, to infrastructure replacement and asset optimization, to supply chain processes and procurement, in order to identify systematic or institutional improvements and a roadmap that could be implemented to ensure these systems are well-positioned to implement effectively the goals that the city has established for LADWP. A major area of focus will be advising LADWP on the strategy and financial impacts of upcoming capital projects, as well as rate design with attention on affordability. Two, assess LADWP's various existing planning documents, such as strategic and/or master plans. For example, LA 100 Study, LA Equity Study, Power System Reliability Program, Water Master Plan, et cetera, and LADWP's staffing, organizational structure, and resource needs to implement these plans, including providing strategic and tactical advice and recommending changes or improvements that would enable LADWP to optimize its position and promptly deliver the goals and meet the deadlines that the city, state, and federal governments have established. The Board of Water and Power Commission expects a report and roadmap that identifies and recommends potential changes that are realistic and achievable to overcome any barriers that may exist within the department that may hinder improved performance and the achievement of these goals. And, number three, in consultation with the city controller's office, review the guidance documents and instructions of the Industrial Economic and Administrative Survey, IEA, and make recommendations for improvements that should be incorporated into future IEA assessments. I'd like to open this up for discussion. If any of the commissioners have any questions, comments, modifications?
I have one comment and one potential modification.
Sure.
The comment is just that I support this, I know how important it is. And I also just want to make sure it's underlined that I know that everyone around the department is already incredibly invested in the success of the department and in us reaching these goals. And, you know, I don't want this to seem like we lack confidence in that. I think we are at this moment of inflection on the board makeup and this moment of welcoming a new GM, and are just looking to make sure that on the board side, we're resourcing, you know, new board members, of which I'm one, and our, and our new GM, to really push a lot of these efforts that matter so much to all of us forward, and make sure that the voices of our labor partners, of all of our staff, of our existing plans are all included in this work. My one recommendation would be that in the place that we talk about affordability, we also include equity, and call that word out specifically and direct the consultants to consider that as part of this process. I think it's really integral to the way we're pursuing this work across the city. But thanks for your leadership on this.
Okay, so as well, and in number?
Paragraph number one, attention on affordability and equity.
Yeah. So it would read, as well as rate design with attention on affordability and equity.
Yes, thank you.
And I would have a comment slash question, and just knowing how long it takes to get some of these planning efforts done, you know, is three months realistic? And anybody have a comment on that?
So it's not three months to complete the work?
No, I know, but to embark on the work. And some people are doing other, I'm just wondering what you all think, right?
Yeah, I think the current read would be, you know, evaluating potential consultants and targeting a recommendation, but maybe not the full selection process, because we know that that can take longer. I think that's a question to Marty and staff, whether this needs amending, or whether you think we could actually execute some form of bid or RFP, or whatever the method that you choose is within that timeframe.
And it says target.
Right. And it's, we have to push the RFP process to do this, but that's something we need to do anyway. And so let's, let this be the example of how to move forward quickly. I think we could take this motion and have a pretty good scope of work, and know what we're, what we're asking for. We'll probably have to evolve that a little bit. But I'd like to try to get something on the street quickly, because it's not going to help the department or the next general manager move forward without having, you know, some of these answers first to really help facilitate what moving forward looks like.
I am a little concerned about the scope of work being tight enough that this doesn't creep into something that's incredibly expensive. We're asking for some really big things here. And so, you know, and we won't be involved, for obvious reasons, in the contracting process. But I think, you know, my recommendation would be to make this scope as specific as possible within the remit of what this board motion is, in order to get this done as cost effectively as possible, because I think otherwise, a consulting group like, you know, Bain or McKinsey or BCG could really run with this thing.
Yeah, I think, and I think what we need to do is tighten it up and also probably do it in terms of tasks, so that it's not just one giant box, but a series of boxes that we have control over what we're asking for, what we're getting at each step of the way. Because we may have times that we want to award a bigger contract, but just decide how much we use and how much we're getting value from. There may be some other step that's long and expensive that we might decide is worth it, or maybe not worth it. We get to that point. But we want to make sure we can start getting the pieces picked off that we need, and could go from there.
Yeah, and hopefully, the motion provides enough clarity, you know, let us know if it doesn't, or if you feel there's anything, you know, that would be helpful in additional guidance from the board. But the focus really is on our ability to effectively achieve these goals that are set ahead of us, and what the key barriers are within the organization, and recommendations for addressing those barriers. And so those barriers may lie in areas like supply chain, or procurement, or workforce, or hiring. So it does require a broad view, but the target is really, you know, understanding what those barriers are for us to effectively.
Some of them may lie outside of the organization too, in places like charter amendments or.
Exactly.
Right.
And very importantly, we want to be very careful about scope creep, but also have the flexibility with the contract to be able to complete the work that's done, because we have struggled in the past where a contract was awarded for a discrete task, but that task needed implementation and follow-on work, and we can't get that part. We haven't got, we didn't get approval for that in advance, so things, in advance. So with that project.
Implementation support being in this request.
At least being part of what is contemplated, so that the entity can be elected to do so if we want to. I think we're all extremely concerned about cost consciousness, but I want to stress also that we want it to be cost-effective. We do sometimes have a tendency to just select the cheapest, or at least, cheapest is not fair, the least expensive vendor. And here, we need to ensure that we, whomever is selected has the right expertise.
Yeah, and I, I should, maybe I should know, but do we have, with, with these types of consulting contracts, I know in other organizations I've been with, actually, low bid is not the methodology, it's based on expertise. Is that the case here as well?
Evaluation.
Okay, thank you.
And when we're talking about equity, affordability, and some of the other issues, local as in American, if you're going to go, sort of, because you can imagine some companies in other parts of the world, especially Australia, having the expertise to deal with some of what we're asking for. Just wondering, some of what your thoughts would be in the future about, you know, as things come in, that we, we, we just, we want the best and the brightest, so that we sort of acknowledge that there's expertise elsewhere, and it's
And I think that.
Maybe relevant.
I think when we're looking at qualifications, we're looking at, you know, who's done work like this for somebody similar to us. And so, and maybe somebody similar locally, or somebody similar in the US, or maybe internationally, they've done something very similar. So, and that's, we'll have to evaluate, if it's really apples to apples that we're comparing.
Yes.
But I think we want to, we want to look broadly for someone who's taken on, because this is not a small task, and there's not a lot of utilities like us. But there are some.
Yeah, I think that utility experience is critical. We don't want our staff spending time educating a firm who's never worked in this space.
We have to understand how our world works, yeah. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense.
Just from my own understanding, then, this separate effort to engage a consultant on, you know, board governance, good governance, that we're all behind, that is, that's happening separately? Are we now wrapping that into this?
Separately.
And that's happening very quickly now, so.
Right. My last thing, I just want to say that I really appreciate Councilman Yaroslavsky and Councilman McCosker's, you know, support on this. I think they really, they want to help us. They see this moment as really, as a really important one, like we do, and they want to support us in this, and I really appreciate that. But ultimately, you know, it's our responsibility as, as the Board of Commissioners to actually, you know, you know, make this choice, take this step, authorize this action, eventually fund this action, so I appreciate our effort to kind of step up and meet that request.
Yeah, and, and the collective interest of all of us to, to advance it, that's, that's very clear.
So, I think we solicited comments from commissioners, but shouldn't, it, does OPA have something to add?
Having worked on benchmarking studies on compensation and total costs, which would typically in large utilities have a time of three to six months, the first time through is taking a long time, three years rather than three months. So, one will have to work hard to make this anything like a three-month timeline. And it'll have to be driven by several top layers, both executive and board. Two, I think there's one important factor for success in this that's left out and I, it needs to be recognized and not put in, is DWP should start doing regular total compensation study updates. OBA has done those, but really it needs to be annual or semi-annual surveys internally that are part of this process to make sure we can remain competitive. Building the staffing levels won't work without that.
That's a very good point.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. With that, may I have a motion, please?
I'm sorry, before the motion, it seems like there has been a little bit of confusion about the, what we meant by three months, so should we maybe add to that sentence? This process should be expedited and target a, do we need to add a clarifying word to the recommendation date? So, it's not that we're getting recommendations from the consultants, but that we're getting a recommendation of the scope and consultant? Is there a good word we could add there to just make that extra clear?
Target a, a selected consultant by three months from now? Or target the selection of a consultant by three months?
I think that, that was what I understood to be, with the target for that, to actually make the award, we'll have to go to board and have to finish all their paperwork, so that might add another little bit of time on top, but the goal will be through the RFP process and have a recommendation, have somebody that we're, that we've selected working with.
Yeah, if we think we can get through that, then maybe saying target a consultant selection date.
And then, and then to the point about input, once we have a consultant on board, then certainly the board can be involved in terms of, of saying, this is what I want to know, this is what I want to see, to, because once, once the selection's made, then the board should definitely be involved in helping steer the work and making sure that we're getting a product that, that you want to have, that helps you out.
And there should be some sort of executive sponsor from management to, to ensure that the process goes smoothly, so.
Maybe an ad hoc committee or something.
I am still concerned this is going to take at least three of you, maybe four, two from water, two from power, for time. You're going to have to start looking for consultants, you're going to have to talk to them, you have to, you know, I, it's a big job.
We, we did, we did a focused solicitation about a year and a half, two years ago for something customer services, and we, we looked for the nationally-recognized leading firms and only solicited them. We might want to expand a little bit larger than this just because there may be some more local players, but I think we could look at a model like that. We, we have to have a competitive process, but we also, and maybe the first, I'd be doing RFI, just to find out who even we think qualifies and pre-qualified firms, so we don't have a hundred things to look through. Plus, we don't want firms that have, you know, no realistic chance of spending a lot of money creating RFPs that we then have to go through. But I think we can, we can slim the process down so it's quicker and so that we end up in a, in a short time talking to a pool of qualified candidates.
All right. So then, I'd like to put forward a motion, I'd like to move to approve this motion with the amendments of, within the paragraph, "I therefore move," changing the word "recommendation" to "consultant selection," and then also paragraph one, that is numbered one, ending with "affordability and equity" rather than just affordability.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lair?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion adopted as amended.
Thank you. Great. Moving to item N2. This item, I lose my mind. Specifically is the Optical Fiber Lease Agreement. So, hi, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Alex Heronilia. I am the Contract Administrator and Electrical Engineering Associate in the Fiber Optic Enterprise Group. I am one of the contract administrators for our lease agreements and all related to fiber.
Great. So, I think first, my questions around this one relate to the, when was the last time we had a fiber lease strategy?
So, I do want to clarify that this specific item is not the strategy yet. That fiber expansion strategy will come on a future board date. But if, to answer your question, I, you know, since my, I started here, we have not had one as robust as the one that we are planning to where we have someone come in and assess our entire service territory for the improvement and building of more fiber to all of LEDWP entities as well as accommodating other LA city agencies as well.
Okay. And when do you anticipate not just the results to be available, but also the ability to come before us to explain the strategy?
I want to say about August of this year is when we can come forward with our, our actual proposal and a timeline, and then the actual results may not be for another year to eighteen months.
Okay, so likely it would take, you're saying, two years before we would be fully able to have executed on the strategy?
Where we have a strategy in hand that then we can decide how to build on it and design with that strategy in mind, exactly.
Okay. With that in mind, is there any particular reason that this contract needs to go five years? I understand that it would likely you would need to proceed for a certain amount of time, but since this is a sizable contract that would then be encumbering whatever our strategy is going forward or at least committing us, is there any reason that it needs to be five years and can it be two years?
I see. So, these contracts do replace a twenty-year contract. Their circuits that have been existing have not needed to change since the last twenty years, and we do offer higher discounts if a customer commits to longer terms. So, that's not something we considered, how this RFP might affect these longer-term contracts, but we, we like to have our customers commit so that we don't need to inform them or renew a contract that generates revenue every few years. So, our preference is five years, however, we do have year-to-year contracts as well.
And how sizable is this one relative to the overall revenue that's generated from our fiber? Like what percentage is, I guess it's 1.8 divided by three, I'm sorry, five, so what is that?
So, we have a annual revenue of about five million for all of our contracts and this one is about half a million, so what is that?
Yeah.
So, it is one of our larger customers and one of our oldest customers as well, USC specifically.
And is there a deadline for this? When, when does the, I can't, it expired last October?
It did. It has been on hold over ever since. There were delays in USC's legal and procurement processes, which is why it has not been to the board until today.
And what transpired during the period of time between October and now?
We continue to uphold their services and if this contract is approved, we do charge them back for the, the term from October to now.
At the, whatever the new rate is?
Exactly, the current, the, the new rate.
If I could clarify, so, we, we've had strategies in the past for using fiber. This is consistent with what we've done historically. Do you have any reason believe that a future strategy, this might be consistent with that or is for sure consistent? Any thoughts on where that would lie or, or maybe about that?
Yeah, the, these are, these are on the existing fiber network. What we're asking for this consultant to do is relook at our strategy for the, the future on the technologies like distributed batteries, distributed electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and how our fiber network should be redesigned in order for us to accomplish that. But most probably the, this fiber that we have to, to this customer will not be impacted by that unless we rewire the system and incorporate these existing-
Ah, so the fi, this fiber strategy is not going to include an assessment of the costs and the rates and the, the service component?
We, we, we might add that at the end, but it's, the core of the, the RFP that we have is basically for cybersecurity protection and also effectiveness of a fiber strategy that we will have in order for us to cover all the distributed generation and, and control systems that we want to put in there. But price will be part of that because we do it every so often. We reassess the market and then we, we look forward on the new contracts, but these are standard fiber optics lease contracts that are, that are consistent with what we, what we offer the dark fiber for.
Okay. I'm, I'm just concerned that we may not be charging appropriately.
Yeah, it could, it could be that when we do the, the new assessment of the fees that we will look forward and we'll adjust that.
Dr. Fickel, do you have any comments?
Yes, a, a couple of things, and I think Aram clarified some of this a bit, is typically for cybersecurity reasons, we want to separate operational fiber from commercial fiber. Is that being, is that separation being maintained in this process?
Yeah. This, this, this is, this is exactly, it's a dark fiber that we don't mix it with our operational fiber, but the strategy that we're seeking is much wider than, than the point A to point B connection that we've done over the years is mainly our focus is, is to run the utility. And it just happens that when we have extra fiber capacity, we offer to the commercial side, but those are totally separated from our, our operational side.
And what metrics do we have in place so that we understand? Now, the revenue on this, because of the market for fiber, seems to be flat in terms of price, but we have escalating operating costs. What is, what is the balance on operating costs and recovery of capital costs on this? What, how, how are we doing on the, our commercial fiber, not our operational fiber leasing? Is it, are there subsidies or are there, is there any net benefit flowing back to either the water or the power fund?
I, I would say we make back our capital costs in the first three years of a lease, and so that is another advantage of a five-year-plus lease agreement where everything beyond two to three years is all profit at that point.
And how about O&amp;M costs associated with the fiber?
I'm sorry?
How about operation and maintenance costs related to the fiber?
Great question. We don't have great numbers for that. We, we do have, we have experienced in the last few years an increase of operation costs due to random vandalisms and maybe trash fires here and there. However, you know, we're, we're still in the positive, I, I don't have the exact numbers.
Yeah, but, but part of it is because we are already investing on the O&amp;M for our utility operations. This marginal cost of additional O&amp;M cost for serving the customer on fiber is very small, but we should, we will get those numbers for you.
Yeah, no, it, it helped to understand. I, I know, I think, Aram, you and I are the only ones who may remember this, but a prior commissioner under the Villarosa administration, Richard Moss, was pressing for regular strategic updates on this in terms of the fiber leasing part.
And that's what we're going to do with the, with the, the new RFP is going to be much more forward-looking. This will be a subset of that because we, we still want to focus on managing the utility and then capitalizing on the dark fiber as we build our system for utility needs. So, so I think this will be, the, the strategy is going to be very critical for us to fit these dark fiber leases into the overall strategy.
It sounds like the, this contract is just highlighting some areas that might be of interest in expand, in expansion, and it's certainly an evaluation of what the O&amp;M burden is associated with servicing these contracts and ensuring that whatever we're charging is sufficient. It sounds like there is a, a desire from staff to keep this as a five-year term and that it won't disrupt-
Correct.
-the, the outcome of the strategy, but I would caution you on future execution of leases in advance of whatever the outcome of the, the strategy is, just so that we can make sure that the strategy informs future lease agreements.
Thank you.
Any other comments from other commissioners?
Not at this time.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve, please?
I move to approve item number two, item number N2.
Second?
Thank you.
Aye.
Commissioner Lair?
Aye.
Commissioner McGraw?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion adopted.
Thank you, thank you. Wait, can you tell me your name again? Sorry, I didn't, I didn't remember.
Alex Heronilia.
Alex? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
All right. Everett, Eric, please, will you close the session?
Julie can close it.
Julie can close it. I always mess it up, sorry. Please ask Julie to close the session.
The board shall recess into closed session for a conference with legal counsel on the items listed on agenda item O. The board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with section 54957.1 of the California Government Code.
Thank you. Yeah, why don't we take a ten-minute break promptly, maybe twelve-minute break and-